Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Tuesday, June 22, 2004. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Colleagues, it is just after 10:15 a.m. and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. But this being Tuesday and the first meeting of the week, we do have a salute to the flag scheduled and Mr. Ludlow also has a special presentation. Let's begin today's meeting by recognizing Councilmember Ludlow.
Thank you, Mr. President. If we could ask everybody to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Face the flag. Place your right hand over your heart, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with never be defeated. Justice for all. Good morning, colleagues. It's a pleasure to be here this morning. I want to ask all of our delegation to come up from the Korean American Federation to come up and join me and also my colleague, Councilmember Tom LaBange, for these two presentations. I'm here today to honor the Korean American Federation for its continuing role in providing outstanding leadership to the city of Los Angeles and for representing the Korean American community of greater Southern California. In doing so, both Councilmember LaBange and I, who share the lion's share of Koreatown, have really been honored to work together on the council in partnership with the leadership of the Korean American Federation. And we've asked many members of the board and some of the leaders to join us here today. The Federation, which has been in the chambers this morning and visiting some of the council members, has really been at the forefront of reminding not only Los Angeles and California but also the rest of the nation that here in Southern California, we are proud to be home of the largest Korean population in the world outside of mainland Korea. I also want to take a special moment here to salute the outgoing president of the Federation, somebody who every member of this council has worked with, Dr. Kiwan Ha, for all of his leadership over the years and just ask for a moment of a round of applause for all of his leadership. In doing so, and I know that Dr. Lee, Dr. Young-Tae Lee, who wasn't able to come this morning, is coming in and filling big shoes as the new president for four years of the Federation. I have had the opportunity to spend a few moments with him and I think Los Angeles, we're going to find the leadership role that Dr. Ha has played will absolutely be fulfilled in this new, young, dynamic doctor coming in to take over the leadership of the Federation. One of the things that I did want to do is just to take a moment for our Channel 35 viewers to give you a little sense of some of the background. This organization has been serving as a leader here in Los Angeles for over 40 years. In its inaugural year, 1962, that has continuously been and has continuously been the umbrella organization for the Korean American advocacy groups throughout Southern California and also throughout the nation. Many of you were here in chambers not too long ago when we celebrated the 100th year anniversary of Korean immigration to Los Angeles and had leaders from the Korean American community from all around the United States of America join us here in council chambers. The Federation's key goal is to serve the Korean American community of greater Southern California but also to make sure that there is an advocacy voice in the political arena for Korean Americans. I know that each one of us here on this council, Eric Garcetti and others, are very excited about the day and we know it is coming soon that we will actually swear into office the first Korean American into the Los Angeles City Council. That is a day that is not far away. They provide financial support and administrative assistance for many of the nonprofit organizations in Koreatown and throughout the nation and also mobilize individuals in an effort for political empowerment. They stage large-scale, community-wide events throughout Southern California. Many of you remember during the South Korea National Soccer Team and its success in the 2002 World Cup. The Korean American Federation was at the helm of that. The Federation now serves a Korean American population that is nearly three-quarters of a million people here in Southern California. And for that, we are continuously indebted to their advocacy, their leadership, and always making sure that the Korean American community has a strong voice not only here in City Hall but in our state Capitol, at the county board of supervisors, and as Dr. Ha can attest in our United States Capitol and in the White House. And with that, I'd like to ask my colleague, Tom LaBange, to say a few words before we ask Dr. Ha to come forward.
Thank you, Martin, very much. It is an honor to serve all people of Los Angeles but it's especially honored, as Martin said, in the 10th district and the 4th district, we have such diversity. So I say, "Kumsamida chingu" for all that you do. And Dr. Ha, I love Dr. Ha because I love his knees. You know why? We hike together in Griffith Park. We climb that great Mount Hollywood, which to him is Nam Sung North. That's right. Nam Sung's a great mountain in the heart of Seoul and it's the mountains that we climb as people is that when we get to the top of those mountains, we're able to help others up. And the Federation has certainly helped all throughout the Korean community to establish themselves in such a strong way. And it's so pleasing to see the transformation of Wilshire Center. You know, they have trouble, Martin, over at the Department of Transportation where they put the Koreatown signs up because once it was at Jefferson in Vermont and then it was up at Olympic and now it's almost all the way up to Beverly. It's amazing how they've transformed a whole community. So I congratulate each and every one in the Federation and with this young man, I congratulate greatly because he's a good one. Congratulations, Dr. Ha. Kumsamida.
Let me also recognize Mr. Garcetti for a few words.
Thank you. Just very briefly, thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Councilmembers Ludlow and LaBange and Dr. Ha. I want to congratulate you on the end of your service as president. You did an extraordinary job but the entire Federation really continues to speak not only for the Korean American community and the Korean community but for all of Los Angeles. You care so much for this city. You care so much for the progress that we are making here and I'm very proud to be in the northern reaches of Koreatown and have so many positive businesses and churches and other Korean American entities that contribute to the areas that I represent. And it was an honor to be with the mayor, with Janice Hahn and others when we went to Korea just over a year and a half ago to strengthen those ties between our countries. But congratulations, especially Dr. Ha, to all the new members of the board and ones who have elevated themselves. We congratulate you as well and we look forward to a wonderful year ahead. Thank you.
Mr. Biaragosa.
I too want to, one, thank Councilmembers Ludlow and LaBange for bringing the leaders of the Korean American Federation here to honor them, to allow all of us the opportunity to do that. I also want to say to my great friend, Dr. Ha, thank you for four wonderful years at the helm of this great organization. Those of us who have interacted with this community know how important this organization is to providing the leadership and the energy and the community support for so many of the initiatives that take place in the Korean American community and we're so proud of all of you. And thank you again, Councilmember Ludlow and LaBange, for bringing them here today.
And now, ladies and gentlemen, the individual who has carried the flag for the Korean American Federation for four years. We want to turn this over to Dr. Kiwan Ha and Anya Asayou. Kumsamida.
First of all, I really appreciate all council members to having this kind of wonderful event for us. As you're aware, the Federation did raise 1.4 million after 9/11 tragedy to donate to Red Cross. So we are part of Americans. So we really are thankful for helping us from the city council members to donate land to build senior citizen center near Olympic and Normandy even though it's not building permit, it's not put yet but we are going to build it with our own fund, with the city land. So we really appreciate Council President Padilla and all the members to approve this land to give to us. So thank you again to Martin Ludlow, to having this wonderful chance, also Tom LaBange. He's always chingu to Korean community. So we always have to see all of them, including Antonio Biaragosa. So he's very nice guy, Eric Garcetti. So I know your district is part of our Koreatown. Eventually, we'll take over. Koreatown will be expanded to all your district. So I know the Korean community is growing every day. So we are about more than three-quarters of millions living in Southern California. Then this community is dynamic, is very newly immigrant but we are really working hard. So we are very proud to be in
Good morning, colleagues. It's a pleasure to be here this morning. I want to ask all of our delegation to come up from the Korean American Federation to come up and join me, and also my colleague, Councilmember Tom Labange, for these two presentations. I'm here today to honor the Korean American Federation for its continuing role in providing outstanding leadership to the city of Los Angeles and for representing the Korean American community of greater Southern California. In doing so, both Councilmember Labange and I, who share, the lion's share of Koreatown, have really been honored to work together on the council in partnership with the leadership of the Korean American Federation. And we've asked many members of the board and some of the leaders to join us here today. The Federation, which has been in the chambers this morning and visiting some of the council members, has really been at the forefront of reminding not only Los Angeles and California, but also the rest of the nation that here in Southern California, we are proud to be home of the largest Korean population in the world outside of mainland Korea. I also want to take a special moment here to salute the outgoing president of the Federation, somebody who every member of this council has worked with, Dr. Kiwan Ha, for all of his leadership over the years, and just ask for a moment of a round of applause for all of his leadership. In doing so, and I know that Dr. Lee, Dr. Young-Tae Lee, who wasn't able to come this morning, is coming in and filling big shoes as the new president for four years of the Federation. I have had the opportunity to spend a few moments with him, and I think, Los Angeles, we're going to find the leadership role that Dr. Ha has played will absolutely be fulfilled in this new, young, dynamic doctor coming in to take over the leadership of the Federation. One of the things that I did want to do is just to take a moment for our Channel 35 viewers to give you a little sense of some of the background. This organization has been serving as a leader here in Los Angeles for over 40 years. In its inaugural year, 1962, that has continuously been, and has continuously been, the umbrella organization for the Korean American advocacy groups throughout Southern California and also throughout the nation. Many of you were here in chambers not too long ago when we celebrated the 100th year anniversary of Korean immigration to Los Angeles and had leaders from the Korean American community from all around the United States of America join us here in council chambers. The Federation's key goal is to serve the Korean American community of greater Southern California, but also to make sure that there is an advocacy voice in the political arena for Korean Americans. I know that each one of us here on this council, Eric Garcetti and others, are very excited about the day, and we know it is coming soon, that we will actually swear into office the first Korean American into the Los Angeles City Council. That is a day that is not far away. They provide financial support and administrative assistance for many of the nonprofit organizations in Koreatown and throughout the nation, and also mobilize individuals in an effort for political empowerment. They stage large-scale, community-wide events throughout Southern California. Many of you remember during the South Korea National Soccer Team and its success in the 2002 World Cup. The Korean American Federation was at the helm of that. The Federation now serves a Korean American population that is nearly three-quarters of a million people here in Southern California. And for that, we are continuously indebted to their advocacy, their leadership, and always making sure that the Korean American community has a strong voice, not only here in City Hall, but in our state Capitol, at the County Board of Supervisors, and as Dr. Ha can attest, in our United States Capitol and in the White House. And with that, I'd like to ask my colleague, Tom Labange, to say a few words before we ask Dr. Ha to come forward.
Thank you, Martin, very much. It is an honor to serve all people of Los Angeles, but it's especially honored, as Martin said, in the 10th District and the 4th District, we have such diversity. So I say, "Kumsamida chingu" for all that you do. And Dr. Ha, I love Dr. Ha because I love his knees. You know why? We hike together in Griffith Park. We climb that great Mount Hollywood, which to him is Nam Sung North. That's right. Nam Sung's a great mountain in the heart of Seoul, and it's the mountains that we climb as people, is that when we get to the top of those mountains, we're able to help others up. And the Federation has certainly helped all throughout the Korean community to establish themselves in such a strong way. And it's so pleasing to see the transformation of Wilshire Center. You know, they have trouble, Martin, over at the Department of Transportation where they put the Koreatown signs up, because once it was at Jefferson in Vermont, and then it was up at Olympic, and now it's almost all the way up to Beverly. It's amazing how they've transformed a whole community. So I congratulate each and every one in the Federation, but this young man, I congratulate greatly because he's a good one. Congratulations, Dr. Ha. Kumsamida.
Let me also recognize Mr. Garcetti for a few words.
Thank you. Just very briefly, thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Councilmembers Ludlow and Labange and Dr. Ha. I want to congratulate you on the end of your service as president. You did an extraordinary job, but the entire Federation really continues to speak not only for the Korean American community and the Korean community, but for all of Los Angeles. You care so much for this city. You care so much for the progress that we are making here, and I'm very proud to be in the northern reaches of Koreatown and have so many positive businesses and churches and other Korean American entities that contribute to the areas that I represent. And it was an honor to be with the mayor, with Janice Hahn and others when we went to Korea just over a year and a half ago to strengthen those ties between our countries. But congratulations, especially, Dr. Ha, to all the new members of the board and ones who have elevated themselves. We congratulate you as well, and we look forward to a wonderful year ahead. Thank you.
Mr. Biaragosa.
I too want to, one, thank Councilmembers Ludlow and Labange for bringing the leaders of the Korean American Federation here, to honor them, to allow all of us the opportunity to do that. I also want to say to my great friend, Dr. Ha, thank you for four wonderful years at the helm of this great organization. Those of us who have interacted with this community know how important this organization is to providing the leadership and the energy and the community support for so many of the initiatives that take place in the Korean American community, and we're so proud of all of you. And thank you again, Councilmember Ludlow and Labange, for bringing them here today.
And now, ladies and gentlemen, the individual who has carried the flag for the Korean American Federation for four years. We want to turn this over to Dr. Kiwan Ha and Anya Asayo. Kumsamida.
First of all, I really appreciate all council members for having this kind of wonderful event for us. As you're aware, the Federation did raise 1.4 million after 9/11 tragedy to donate Red Cross. So we are the part of America, so we are part of the American citizen. So we really are thankful for helping us from the city council members to donate land to build senior citizen center near Olympic and Normandy, even though it's not building permit, it's not put yet, but we are going to build it with our own fund, with the city land. So we really appreciate Council President Padilla and all the members to approve to this land to give to us. So thank you again to Martin Ludlow, to having this wonderful chance, also Tom Labange. He's always chingu to Korean community, so we always have to see all of them, including Antonia Biaragosa. So he's very nice guy, the Eric Garcetti. So I know that your district is a part of our Koreatown. Eventually, we'll take over. Koreatown will be expanded to all your district. So I know the Korean community is growing every day, so we are about more than three-quarter millions in living in Southern California. Then this community is dynamic, is very newly immigrant, but we are really working hard. So we are very proud to be in the United States. I'm very proud to be a good citizen here. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ludlow. Thank you, Dr. Ha, for your service. Madam Clerk, while they finish taking pictures, would you please call the roll?
Cardenas Garcetti, Grohan, Labange, Ludlow, Miskowski Parks, Perry, Ray, Smith, Biaragosa, Weiss, Zine, Padilla, 13 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, colleagues. The council is officially in session. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Garcetti moves. Mr. Smith seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Zine moves, and Mr. Labange seconds.
Mr. President, this is a time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
Okay, and at this time, I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council under general public comment. General public comment for today's meeting is closed. Next item, please.
First items on the agenda are items noticed for public hearings. Items 1 through 6 are building and safety confirmations of assessments. The department has advised that items 2 and 6 can be received and filed in as much as the assessments have been paid.
Okay, I do have a card on item number 1. Let's call that special. Colleagues, we have the recommendations to receive and file item 2 and 6, and...
And that would leave 3, 4, and 5 before council for confirmation.
3, 4, and 5 before council for confirmation. Members of the council wishing to call any of these items special? Seeing none, let's open the roll on 2 through 6. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
3, 4, and 5 are approved. Items 2 through 6 are received and filed. Next item, please.
Next items, 7, 8, 9, and 10 are street lighting districts, and councils should open the hearings and continue the hearings and ordinances to July 13th.
Okay, 7 through 10 now before us, and I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council. All these items, public hearings are open, and without objection, continue to July 13th, three weeks from today. Next item.
Items 11 and 12 are planning land use management committee reports.
And I do have cards on item number 12. Let's call that item special to hear from members of the public. On item 11, I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council. Public hearing is open and closed on item 11. Members of the council wishing to call this item special? Seeing none, let's open the roll on item 11. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Items for which public hearings have been held, items 13 through 26.
Members 13 through 26 now before us. Public hearings have been held in these items in committee. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. Members wishing to call any specials? Ms. Perry.
Item 20, please.
20, call special by Ms. Perry. Mr. Zine?
19.
19, call special by Mr. Zine. Mr. Smith?
14.
14, call special by Mr. Smith. Ms. Hahn? Done. Mr. Parks? 25, call special by Mr. Parks.
21 for refusal.
21 for Mr. Garcetti.
Is it?
Ms. Perry?
Mr. Labange has asked that I call 67 and 14 special. He's off the, he's in the back right now.
Okay, 14 has been called special by Mr. Smith. We'll get to 67 in a few minutes. Any other specials, colleagues? This is items 13 through 26. I have 14 call special, 19, 20, 21, and 25 also call special. If there's no further request for specials, Madam Clerk, let's open the roll and the balance of the items. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Those matters are approved. Next items, please.
Items for which public hearings have not been held, items 27 through 62, 10 votes are required for consideration.
And colleagues, I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are open, public hearings are closed. Members wishing to call any specials, 27 through 62.
Mr. President, I believe on item number 50, there's a request to receive and file that motion in as much as it is incorrect, and the correct ordinance will be on Friday's agenda.
Okay. Without objection, that'll be the recommendation that we act on. Mr. Zine?
57 and 65.
57, and we're almost to 65, not quite there yet.
Okay.
57, call special by Mr. Zine. Any other specials and dispatch of items? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Those are approved. Fourth with on item 38, please. Next item.
Item on the continued agenda, item notice for public hearing, item number 63.
63 now before us, and I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on this item. Public hearing is open and closed. Any member of the council wishing to call item 63 special? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved.
Mr. President, can I have a fourth with on 56, please?
Fourth with on item 56. Next items, please.
Items for which public hearings have been held, items 64 and 65.
Mr. Zine calls item 65 special, leaving item 64. Members of the council wishing to call item 64 special? Seeing none, let's open the roll on item 64. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with, please. Next items.
Items for which public hearings have not been held, items 67 and, excuse me, 66 and 67, 10 votes are required for consideration.
And without objection, these items are before us today. I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on 66 and 67. Public hearings open and closed. Mr. Labange calls item 67 special?
66.
66, call special.
There's a substitute motion, and I've been asked by the Bureau to reconsider 64 when you're done, too. They had a technical amendment to the prop case stuff.
Okay, item 66, call special by Mr. Garcetti, and that brings us to the end of our agenda. We have a reconsideration motion. We can do that without objection. Item 64 reconsidered for a technical amendment, and if that's still being circulated, let's hold item 64 on the desk for a few minutes. Madam Clerk?
Going back to the first item, call special, that would take council to item number 1, call special for a card from the public.
Okay, item number 1 now before us, and the council calls forward, Ms. Bobby D., I believe it's Circe? Circe, please come forward.
Good morning. I am here to speak on behalf of my son, Roderick Circe, who is ill, and he has prepared a letter. I'll just kind of summarize the content of the letter for him. This is to acknowledge receipt of the notice of hearing dated May 4th, year 2004, case number 104927, that I received from the Department of Building and Safety Code Enforcement Bureau, abandoned building task force regarding my property known as 636 West 157th Street, Gardena, California 90247. It was his intention to attend today, however, he is ill, but he opposes the proposed lien of $18,944.43 that has been proposed by Building and Safety. It should be noted that he did not willfully abandon the property identified. The house was totally destroyed by a fire in April, year 2002, and this is, I'm reading his content, "while my family and I were on a weekend vacation out of the state. I hired legal representation, attorney Robert Bazewick, Beverly Hills, in as much as Scotchdale Insurance Company refused to pay the claim that I had submitted. I attended the meetings of which I was aware with the Building and Safety Abandoned Building Task Force, along with my legal representation, to discuss their concerns. It should be noted that at the same time that my attorney and I were meeting with the task force, on one occasion, a very high and expensive fence was being installed around the property on the authority of a city official or representative without my knowledge or prior notification. I paid for some lot cleaning. Additionally, I paid for the house to be demolished at the city's request in spite of this matter being in litigation. A trial was held in the latter part of year 2003 in Costa Mesa without a favorable outcome. An associate of his attorney became involved shortly before the trial and represented him at a disadvantage because the insurance company did not give the attorney numerous documents in a timely manner. For your information, the property was purchased over a year ago, frame house built over 80 years ago at a cul-de-sac near the Harbor Freeway. My son's attorney's fire inspector indicated that the fire was due to an electrical problem. A fire hydrant is located immediately in front of the property, and there are neighbors next door on the west side and neighbors across the street. Nevertheless, the fire was first reported in the early morning hours, while still dark, to the fire department by a passing motorist on the Harbor Freeway using a cellular phone."
Ma'am, if I may ask you to conclude, please?
Excuse me?
If I may ask you to wrap up?
Yes. This ordeal has left me emotionally, physically, and financially devastated, in addition to my family. I respectfully request a modification that is reasonable regarding the circumstances. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comments for item number 1. Colleagues, are there members of the council wishing to be heard on item number 1? If not, would you have the report with recommendations before us? Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 12, call special for a card from the public.
And we do have quite a few cards on item number 12. So I'm going to call a series of names, and if you would all please form a line behind the podium that would expedite our public hearing on this item. Madam Clerk, if maybe we can put up a 10-minute clock. And the council calls forward at this time David Maderia. David Maderia? Are you here on item number 12? Sister Diane Donahue? Please come forward. We need you to form a line at the podium. Yolanda Gonzalez? And Rhonda Meister? There's a lot of cards here, folks, so your brevity would be appreciated. Add from the podium, ma'am, please. Ma'am, from the podium there. There's a lot of cards, so your brevity would be appreciated, and if somebody before you has already said what you're trying to say, you know, let's try not to be too repetitive here. And the other names, folks, instead of taking a seat, if I've called your name, please form a line behind the podium, so as soon as one speaker's done, you can immediately jump right in. So don't sit down. Let's form a line here. David Maderia, Sister Diane Donahue, Yolanda Gonzalez, Rhonda Meister, and I'll call other names as we proceed. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is David Madera, and I'm in opposition to the St. Joseph's project. I am on the other side of the block, and I feel that now that the Krishnas are on the other end of the block, they have the same rights as now being granted to St. Joseph's, as should all of us other property owners on Hampton and 3rd Street have these same rights to build structures without adequate parking and to totally disregard any zoning or any Venice specific plan items concerning building. It's already a huge problem with parking down there, and that is my main, the main thing I wanted to say so that the other people against the project can speak also.
Okay, thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Sister Diane Donahue. I'm the executive director of Esperanza Community Housing in South Los Angeles, and we serve families in the 1st, the 8th, and the 9th districts. But I've had an incredibly long history with the people at St. Joseph's Center, and more to the point, the work that they do. And I'm very, very honored to be able to support them in the kind of community service that they do, which is excellent for the last 28 years. And the importance of the outreach services as well as what they offer inside the building is incredible. They are absolute stakeholders in the neighborhood, and they absolutely give a credential and a promise and a hope to the people of that neighborhood. And I thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much. Ms. Gonzalez?
Good morning, city council. My name is Yolanda Gonzalez, and I live in Venice, and I'm in the process right now of trying to get a permit for the last four years to comply with the Venice Commission and all the permits that are required. If I'm required to meet those conditions, then I think St. Joseph's should also be required. I want to remind you, when we built our Boys and Girls Club, by which we raised almost close to $4.5 million, my friend Jim Crow was, had to really go with the architects, and they made us, at that time, comply with all city planning conditions. There's no reason why St. Joseph's can't meet the same requirements. And if you go back to your minutes on the requirements that Boys and Girls Club at that time had to meet and we all had to meet, there's no reason why St. Joseph's can't do it. I'm going to tell you something that's happening. I am ashamed at St. Joseph's for using certain people, for using not only the rich that want to send us to Iraq, and not only that, I came here to seek the American dream, and there's no reason why we cannot progress in the city of Los Angeles.
Okay, ma'am, I'm going to ask you to conclude now so we can hear from other speakers.
It is important and vital that this city council go back to their basics. It's important that you see that this city complies. It's important that you see elections are coming up, and we're going to see who we're going to be voting for.
Thank you very much. Rhonda Meister, and she will be followed by George Milston, Tisha Bedrosian, Sheila Bernard, and Mark Hammond.
Good morning, council members. My name is Rhonda Meister. I'm executive director of St. Joseph's Center and have been since 1986. St. Joseph's Center has been offering services since 1976 in Venice. We currently have 11 programs that serve a wide range of persons in need, including working poor families, children, senior citizens, homeless persons, veterans, and mentally ill. Our Hampton Drive site is what we are here to talk about today. It is an outdated school building built in the early '60s. It is constantly in need of repair and has become inadequate for the services we offer at that site, which are centered around working poor families, children, and seniors, not transient homeless. Renovations would not be enough to make this site work for the programs that we run. From the beginning of this project, we have tried hard to work with neighbors, business owners, the council office, and the community to make this project work for everyone. We have made substantial changes to the design and have around 40 conditions under which we will operate the new facility. We are confident moving forward that this project will improve the neighborhood and that the center will continue to be a welcoming space for the poor in our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
George Milston, Latham Watkins. We are representing St. Joseph's Center on a pro bono basis. This is a fabulous program. It's a great program for the community. We are pleased at the strong support we've received from the council office. As has been indicated, there are a number of conditions imposed on this project to protect the community. It has been approved by the neighborhood council. It has been approved by the Area Planning Commission, and it has received the support of the mayor. This is truly a fabulous program, and we urge your approval of the committee report. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much. Ms. Bedrosian?
Good morning. My name is Tisha Bedrosian. I live just across the street from the St. Joseph's Center at 202 3rd Avenue. I'm speaking on behalf of eight neighbors who could not be here today. Bill Kelly, Tom Fuller, Dave and Dominique Caddison, Lisa Landris, Art Gray, Josh Caddison, and Chris Bedrosian. We all live across the street from the center. Our concerns are simply that this project does not meet the Venice specific plan. Height, it's far too high. Parking, we already live three blocks from the beach where people who visit us can't find places to park, and we're concerned about the entrance on 3rd being used as traffic will go in and out of our neighborhood. We would like the council to adopt the findings of the West Los Angeles Planning Commission, which met three times and thoughtfully listened to the neighbors' concerns and drafted conditions. which met three times and thoughtfully listened to the neighbors' concerns and drafted conditions. We would like those conditions placed on this development. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speakers, and again, let me ask for your cooperation here in forming a line behind the podium. Ms. Sheila Bernard, followed by Mark Hammond, Kathleen Truman, and Iriha Ali Manesteanu. Go ahead.
Good morning, Council members. I'm Sheila Bernard, President of the Grassroots Venice Neighborhood Council. I'm here to affirm that the Neighborhood Council did approve the Saint Joseph's Project after numerous hearings of our land use and planning committee, and I urge you to vote for this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
I live across--
Your name, ma'am?
My name is Iriha Ali Manesteanu, and I live at 226 and 224 Third Avenue, which is pretty much across the street. And currently, there is no street parking. I mean, it's really very full. All the streets are full with cars. And I'm concerned that they're not gonna have enough parking the way that they have it set up. And then this idea of an off-site parking, I'm just wondering where they're gonna do that and how they're gonna be shuttling people in and out of the area. So my concern is parking. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have, is Mark Hammond here? Go on, one--
I think it's me, Marie.
Oh, Marie?
Hammond.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Miss read the card.
Yes.
And followed by Kathleen Truman.
Okay. My name is Marie Hammond, and I'm a Venice resident. I think nobody in the neighborhood is denying that Saint Joseph's does good work. What we're upset about is the project and the building. I believe that there is no reason why they cannot build this project to fit in with the Venice specific plan or at least alter it so that there is sufficient parking. Eighty-two percent of the parking is across, eighty-two percent of the parking is in Santa Monica, and that's the lot we would like to have tied. That means that the church who owns this in the future could do anything they want with that. There is very little parking around the neighborhood, and there are no empty lots to provide future parking. If you build this and then six months from now say there's not sufficient parking, I'd like to know where you're gonna put it. I think Saint Joseph's should be a good neighbor and comply with the Venice specific plan or at least provide sufficient parking. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, I'm gonna call four more names, and after we hear from the following four individuals, we'll see where we are on time. I know there's a lot of you here who have submitted cards both for and against. I have Kathleen Truman next, followed by Steve, Claire, Retta Moser, and Roger Webster.
Hi, I'm Kathleen Truman from Latham &amp; Watkins. In the interest of time, I would just ask that the supporters of the project please rise and be recognized. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Mr. Claire?
Good morning. My name is Steve Claire. I'm a thirty-five-year Venice resident and property owner, and also the Executive Director of the Venice Community Housing Corporation, which is a housing and community development organization which serves low-income families in Venice and surrounding neighborhoods. I'm here to support the project and urge you to give a favorable consideration. I want to address one specific issue, which is the exception that the Saint Joseph's Center has requested to the Venice specific plan for height. The Venice specific plan provides for twenty-five-foot height limit. They've requested forty-one feet. It's needed in order to build a two-story building only because it is, has to build on an uphill slope of what is the only hill in the Venice area. Now, the municipal code specifically provides for exceptions for height variances where topography is an issue, as it is in this case. There are several other two-story buildings built on uphill slopes, and we believe that Saint Joseph's Center should be able to build what a property owner in any other part of Venice would be able to build as a matter of right. I would also like to say that the building that they're proposing is appropriate for the neighborhood. There are three and four-story buildings within five hundred feet of this project, and across the street from this project is, there are only commercial and industrial uses.
Let me ask you to conclude so we can hear from the other speakers as well.
Thank you, I will. I appreciate very much the opportunity to speak for you. I urge you to give favorable consideration of the project. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Retta Moser?
My name is Rita Moser. I do not live near the project. My concern is, and it does not involve Saint Joseph's being good or bad, I assume the project is good, but I'm concerned about the specific plan and its violations. It has a violation of height, of rezoning. The five lots are not supposed to be contiguous and put together. They are zoned right now as RD 1.5. They're gonna put a commercial endeavor on them. The parking is scandalous. Prior to this time, it was considered a recreational center. It was a recreational center until they discovered they needed four hundred places to park. At that time, they changed it to a philanthropic institution so they could have one in five hundred. We live near the beach. I am concerned about the Venice specific plan. Where does it stop?
Okay. Thank you very much. And Roger Webster's our final speaker for now.
Good morning. I'm Roger Webster. I live at 257 Hampton Drive. My office is at 321 Hampton Drive. I own an acre and three-quarters, forty-five thousand square feet of built property directly across the street from Saint Joseph's Center, and I'm specifically concerned with parking. I believe the studies that have been done might have been well-intended, but I don't think that they completely address the likelihood of what usually happens in a development, particularly with shared parking, largely undeveloped site that's also owned by the church where they might want to intensify their use. It's also being used for beach parking, community parking, and there's a lot of traffic there in the center, which publish their own figures regarding their staff and the amount of cars they're need, they will be needing. I think it's underestimated what's gonna be required to function properly there, and I don't think this project should be approved as it is, and I think the parking study should be expanded and made part of public records so that we can see what's proposed and--
Thank you.
That's basically it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comments on this item. Let me read the other cards that were submitted. The cards will be added to the file. Submitting cards for general comments are Darrell Dufay and somebody representing Venice Centennial. Against the proposal, Barbara Gibson and A. Holcomb. And for the proposal, Clara Sturrock, Anna Friendly, Paul Rubenstein, Nancy Hernandez, Charles Hill, Mary Carmen Maldonado, Amy Amsterdam, Maureen O'Connor, and Bruce Rankin. I want to thank you all for being here and for your cooperation in this public hearing. We now turn to council discussion on this item. Ms. Misakowski?
Thank you, Mr. President. As you can tell, this has been an issue that has been much discussed in the Eleventh District and has been for a number of years. This is not the only site that Saint Joseph's Center operates, and at many of the hearings the concern has been about some of the other operations. But this is a service and a site that has existed at Saint Joseph's Center. As was indicated, it is, there are very old buildings. They have provided more and new services, outreach services, food bank programs, childcare services, and the like. They need a new facility. They are raising money for a new facility, and they've come through the process of meeting with the community, meeting with my office, my office helping to facilitate meetings within the community. And we have caused this to change from the first presentation of a plan and a project to the current iteration. And we've caused it to change as a consequence of input from the community. As you've heard, we have caused it to change in terms of adding more conditions. And ultimately, I think what you've said, what you've heard today is even with ongoing dialogue and concern, there are still issues. But ultimately, I think that's always gonna be the case with a service of this nature, which is providing service in a community which might have some tensions. The big issues, the ones we tried to address, there is an appropriate process for a specific plan exception. This applicant has gone through that. We have modified that specific plan exception request that relates to height to deal with the issues of this property. We're not dealing with a flat piece of property. We're dealing with a property that has different elevations, so that from one street side it would measure differently than from the other street side because of the slope in between the property. We've caused it to be stair-stepped and stepped back. We have, the bigger, the biggest issue, I think, to my way of thinking, has been parking. And what we've required is, this is shared parking. It's shared parking with the church that's next door. There is, there will be requirement on that shared parking. And moreover, a year from the time that the center operates, we will have a study to be submitted to the zoning administrator, to the Department of Transportation, to verify that the parking that is projected and the way the parking will work in terms of the shared use and using it at different operations of time is working. The community has said, well, gee, what happens if that other use partner comes in, the church, and wants to use it differently? That will be a separate application that would have to be considered at its own time. There is nothing that would be allowed by right there without a review of the parking, particularly as that parking is committed to be shared by Saint Joseph's Center. We have added cleanup. Once a day, someone from Saint Joseph's Center is required to go through the neighborhood and clean up and pick up debris because there's been concern about that. There is additional security that has been added. Full-time, a security guard is on duty. A hotline is to be required, that is, to be verified and checked and provided both my office and the community what kind of calls and responses they've had to that hotline every three months. I believe that the conditions, there have been issues about the evening meetings. That's been limited to a certain number with a reasonable amount of people to be not exceeded in those evening meetings. I believe that we've attempted to address the issues as they've been raised and not say that we're washing our hands of it, but requiring further that within a year's time after it's up and operating in the new facility, further submittals and information be given to the zoning administrator, be submitted to the community to rectify and add further conditions if necessary, if that's what's proven at that point. I believe that this has gone through the process. It makes sense. I believe that we have worked with the community, and ultimately, as you heard, the Neighborhood Council has affirmed and verified its support for this project. So I ask for an I-vote for the Plum Committee recommendation, as was indicated. This had gone, a zoning administrator had approved it, the West LA APC has approved it, the Planning and Land Use Management Committee has approved it, and I'm asking for the council to adopt that action.
Ms. Hahn?
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you, Councilwoman Misakowski, for discussing this. And clearly, you are absolutely right. Sometimes, no matter what we do, and sometimes, no matter how long the process is and how many community meetings there are and how many opportunities there are for people to weigh in on these issues, at the end of the day, sometimes neighbors are not gonna be happy with what they perceive as, as an institution that may not, they feel is compatible with their neighborhood. But I do believe that no one is speaking against Saint Joseph's, and clearly, they do good work, and clearly, they fill the gap that government cannot ever fill in terms of meeting the needs of so many people in our society. I will say, in my discussions with some of the members who are opposed to it, they did raise concerns about parking, about security, about the cleanup, but it sounds like those have been addressed. Let me just ask the specific thing. I know Tish got up and said they would be happy if we would just approve the recommendations of the Planning Commission, the West LA Planning Commission. Can someone speak to whether or not that is what some of those conditions actually were? Are we, in fact, adopting the recommendations that the Planning Commission made? And if not, so if you could just kind of speak to that, I'd appreciate it.
There was requirement of the APC that a lot tie be put together, that is, forcing Saint Joseph's and the Catholic Church next door to merge their lots. We did not require that. That APC had required that. We did require that drawings be submitted to the APC. We changed some of the design standards. The Plum Committee did recommend allowing the evening meetings to contain, to have more people. They had, the APC had said no more than twenty-five people at an evening meeting. We allowed it to go up to seventy-five people. But on yearly average, there shall be no more than five times a month that there would be an evening meeting, so it won't be regular evening meetings. We also required that there be a plan approval to review these limits. In other words, a year from now, a year from operation, that is reviewed to see if that should be additionally changed. So essentially, we limited the access to certain directions of, as per the recommendation of the Department of Transportation, to make it come away from Hampton Drive. So essentially, what Plum Committee did was just made some minor modifications on the APC. So essentially, the APC conditions are enhanced, are being adopted with just some minor changes that Plum Committee corrected.
Well, I appreciate that, Gid. And at the end of the day, it sounds like there's still gonna be some unhappy people, but honestly, one thing I have learned is I don't usually argue with Cindy about planning issues. She, she really does her homework. She's very thorough. I think what would give, what I hope, you know, ends up happening, because sometimes, as you know, which is why Neighborhood Councils were established. Neighborhood Councils were established because in the old days, you know, we made decisions down here that impacted you and your neighborhood without really giving you an opportunity to weigh in on those issues and express your concerns. It does sound like this has gone through the process, but even so, we're gonna make a decision today, I'm assuming, that will probably approve this. But then, we don't live there. We're not there on a daily basis. We're not gonna see what you see. And I'm hoping that the, this hotline, and I don't know how that's gonna work. I don't know who knows that number. I don't know what real recourse you're gonna have, but what I hope is instituted is some way for the neighborhood to keep Saint Joseph's accountable. And that's really what it is for all of us in all of our planning issues and all of our projects in Los Angeles. There has to be a way, after we make our decisions, to keep them accountable to what I know that Cindy wants to make sure happens in that community. So hopefully, that works. If you find that that hotline is not giving you the recourse you need, I hope Cindy's office will be amenable to working out something that you can continue to hear from the neighborhood on whether or not these conditions actually are being met.
Mr. Weiss?
Thank you, Mr. President. I sit on the Plum Committee, and it was very clear to me from the hearing that Mr. Reyes held in Plum a few weeks ago that this is a case where our colleague Cindy Misakowski has done a fantastic job of balancing all the interests here. We have a very worthy institution that really deserves the opportunity to do more, to care for the disadvantaged, and we have a community that has legitimate concerns. The council office, the council deputies have clearly worked long and hard with everybody and mitigated the issues that can be mitigated while at the same time standing for the very important principle that this worthy institution in our city needs to be something that, it's something the city ought to nurture and ought to cherish and ought to encourage. I wish I had an entity like this in my district, Ms. Hahn. I mean, I'm sure you feel the same. I mean, these are really wonderful institutions, and my hat is off to Councilmember Misakowski and her staff for doing the work they've done. And as, as she knows better than I, because she's done this longer than I, at the end of the day, you have to stand up for what's right. And, and she's clearly doing that, and I really appreciate it, and I will support her here today.
Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Council President. As you can see in the report, colleagues, the Plum Committee voted unanimously as a yes to support the report and the direction that Councilmember Misakowski was taking this project. What was especially striking to me is that you had such a profound base, a long history in this particular facility in addressing the many needs that we find in our city. And what tends to happen is that some of this issue of need gets a little blurred when you start looking at how communities appear. But we don't see the two or three families living at home. You don't see the hardships. And for this center to be there, to offer that relief, I believe is critical. But just as important is their attentiveness to the detail and the responsiveness and how they were trying to release the pressures that they felt were being created, the way they're designing the building, addressing the parking. They do want to be responsive to the local community. And again, as been stated by my colleagues, the stewardship shown by Councilmember Misakowski's office and how they built in the checkpoints is critical. And so, as we keep going down this process, I just want to emphasize that-- I just want to emphasize that and sometimes in our own communities, we need a fire station and there's a fire around you. They don't want the fire station because it's disruptive, it's change. But yet, you need to have the means to control that fire. And in many of our neighborhoods, there are different types of fires going on and essentially, it takes hard work to get to this consensus. So I just want to thank Councilmember Misakowski and hopefully, our colleagues continue working in a manner in which we do address these types of facilities in a manner in which it gives those who are relatively voiceless a chance. Thank you.
Ms. Grul.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. I had the pleasure of working with St. Joseph's Center when I worked for Mayor Bradley. And they've had an incredible reputation and I think, as all my colleagues have stated, this is a good balance. And Ms. Misakowski, as usual, has had some checkpoints in there to ensure, address the neighborhood's concerns. But we see that the homeless population is continuing to grow and we can't ignore that fact. So I wanted to stand up and congratulate the Plum Committee as well for their approval of this project and to express my support for St. Joseph's and for all of you that are here today, many old friends that came and took the time to support St. Joseph's. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grul. Other members of the council wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 14 called special by Councilmember Smith.
Item 14 now before us, Mr. Smith. Mr. Smith, item 14.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Now, last week, we put this off and at the time, I asked the staff to bring me some information. I never received anything from you and I just want you to know that I'm going to vote against this today just because you did not make, bring any of the things you told me you were going to bring me during the past week. So I just wanted you to know that.
Okay, let's proceed with the vote. Mr. Zein.
I would ask for an explanation as to why Councilmember Smith's questions were not answered by the respective personnel or departments. I think when a councilor makes a request on something as significant as this, there should be a reply. So I'd like to know why a response was not given.
Tricia Carey with the CLA. The presentation was to be in reference to the contracts that were going to be submitted today but were unable to make it to the clerk's office in time to be agendized today. So they will be on, they will be making a presentation tomorrow in council as the department had indicated on the contracts and the ordinance that the city attorney submitted. This, what's before you today is a position to support an assembly bill in the state.
So as I understand, there will be a reply to Councilmember Smith's request before we approve the program? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, this is just a bill position. They were agendized together previously, but since the department and the city, the contracts didn't make it to the clerk's office in time to be placed on today's agenda. So as far as I know right now, there will be a special agenda for both those items to be heard tomorrow.
So before we vote on the item, there will be an explanation to answering the Councilmember Smith's questions? Okay, thank you.
And what is before you today is a bill to support A B 2871, which will remove the need for local jurisdictions to renew a declaration of local public emergency every 14 to 21 days to operate needle exchange programs. The Arts Health and Aging Committee voted to support this bill and since that time, the Department on Disability has requested that the city also seek an amendment to remove any requirement that needle exchange programs be agents or employees of the local jurisdiction due to liability issues.
Mr. LeBange.
Mr. President, thank you. Mr. Schulman, how are you, David? Could you just speak to it? Because I know there's, Greg, you may want to hear this. Keith Richmond, who's a very dedicated assemblyman, a former physician, supports this in his efforts here. Could you speak to some of these issues here that we have before us?
Yes, Councilmember. I'm David Schulman. I'm with the City Attorney's Office. I'm also the city's de facto institutional memory on AIDS. Mr. Smith, the city's support of needle exchange goes back to the early 1990s when the federal government first established through extensive research that needle exchange did not increase crime. It also did not create new drug users. There were two bills passed in the California Assembly in the early 90s that were both vetoed by the governor. The city then supported additional efforts to legalize needle exchange in the late 1990s and that culminated in the effort that resulted in the, in the statute that this bill would amend. The, this bill would fix a last-minute glitch in the statute that was the result of 11th hour negotiations with, with the governor. It imposed undue restrictions. The Kaiser Family Foundation, a well-regarded medical research institution, has documented the kinds of burdens that the existing law imposes on local jurisdictions. And this bill is a fix-it bill to retain local jurisdictions' responsibility for monitoring properly-run programs but to remove the burden of having to issue a declaration.
And thank you, Mr. City Attorney. But from the police department's standpoint and our discussions with them, they support this program under the rigid guidelines that it does help stem the tide of the advancement of AIDS by having needle exchange properly administered. That's correct. And I know you could all address that.
Right, the AIDS Coordinator's Office retains a close relationship. I'm sorry, Steven Simon, City AIDS Coordinator. My office does retain a close relationship with the police department. We work carefully in every area that a needle exchange is currently operating. We take very seriously Councilmember Smith's request around a report on a needle exchange program and we will be doing a full report on that tomorrow.
Right, yeah, on the agenda. I ask for an "I" vote and I thank you. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney, for your long work on this issue. Please, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LeBange. Other members wishing to be heard? If not, let's proceed with the vote, colleagues.
As amended.
Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item 14 as amended.
Can we request that this go forthwith, please, since it will be heard tomorrow?
Let's, let us vote on this first. Roll is open. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes, one no.
That is approved. Forthwith, please. Next item.
Item number 19 called special by Councilmember Zein.
Mr. Zein.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number 1920. I wanted to call this special because I know that Councilmember Hahn was concerned about this. We heard this in committee. And I just want to make sure that the Dunn representative, I see him approaching the table.
So are we going to?
There was some confusion.
Mr. Zein, you wish to take item 19 and 20 together?
Yeah, I think we should.
Okay.
Councilmember Perry had a question on it, Councilmember Hahn and myself. The questions I have is that, again, we did hear this in committee, the expenditure of dollars and the dollars that they're given and the timeframe and documents went out to neighborhood councils and apparently, they were conflicting. There was some confusion. And what I want to make sure is that they've been notified on the expenditures and the ability to make expenditures and the ability to encumber the funds and exactly what went out to clarify the misinformation because there were some timeframes that somehow were modified. And now, we're going to give them what they need to do the job. In previous, there was some confusion and some concern. So if you could just explain what we've done to correct, not necessarily what was wrong, but what we've done to correct so, and then how we've notified them that this new process is in place so they'll all be on the same page.
Greg Nelson, General Manager, Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. We, the first step was to email all of the presidents, all of the board members, all of the treasurers. Then we immediately followed up with phone calls to all of the treasurers. The residual from that was there were still like one or two who wanted to make sure, who had questions. I get copied on all those emails so I know those conversations. And the answers that are coming back seem to be satisfying the neighborhood councils. They seem overwhelmingly happy with the new system. And I don't, I don't see any problems right now that are causing us to raise red flags.
So were they notified, other than email, were they notified with a letter or anything else? Are they all on board with the new process?
Yeah, they were all notified by email of the new process immediately.
And they all have emails? All neighborhood councils have email?
Yes. And then we, the way we do it with neighborhood councils is we make sure there's at least one person who is the main contact for every neighborhood council. But then, to ensure that there's no slip-ups through the electronic system, we send the email also to the, all the board members. And then we followed with the phone calls immediately by our staff.
Okay, so you're satisfied that everybody's on board? Everybody's up to date on what's going on?
Yeah, it's, it feels good right now.
Okay, I just want to make sure it continues to feel good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues, and thank you, Councilman Zein, for bringing this up. And just for the members who may not, who may be confused about the confusion and in case you're getting calls in your office like I'm getting in mine, what happened was, our neighborhood councils were given a 30-day notice that they were to have encumbered their funds before the end of the fiscal year or otherwise, they would lose them. Use them or lose them. That came to my attention as being way too short of a notice. And it seemed to me that it was encouraging neighborhood councils to, you know, try to encumber funds before they even had an opportunity to have meetings and decide on how they wanted to spend the funds. So I introduced a motion allowing our neighborhood councils to in fact, roll over their funds to the next year so that they would not have to be treated like other city departments that have to have their funds encumbered by the end of the fiscal year. Come to find out, it was a result of my motion that there was some investigation done. And in fact, the good news is we don't treat neighborhood councils like every other city department and we really don't require neighborhood councils to encumber their funds at the end of the fiscal year or lose them. We in fact, allow neighborhood councils to roll over their funds to the next year. So that was the good news. But there was two issues there. One, even though it was bad advice or wrong advice, it was given to, in too short of a notice. Ended up to be not the right thing to do. But in fact, it brought up the second issue was how do we notify our neighborhood councils on some impending, in my opinion, a pretty serious issue like how they spend their funds, whether or not they're going to lose them. So that was my second part of it was, seems to me like we're still having a difficult time empowering neighborhood councils to really understand what they can use their money for, how they can use it, when they can use it and such. So it was kind of a two-part thing. But the good news was, we don't require neighborhood councils to roll over their, I mean, to use their funds or lose them. But there was still an issue about, about communication. So you may be getting the calls in your office. So just to make sure everyone knows or if anybody's watching Channel 35 right now, neighborhood councils may roll their funds over and don't have to have any mad rush at the end of the year to encumber their funds. I will say, Greg, I am still getting calls in my office as late as Friday of still some confusion. So it seems to me, it's still not clear in one way or another and I don't know if the emails have gotten to the right people or if members of the neighborhood councils maybe haven't been communicated to by their leadership. But I've been getting calls in my office as of Friday for some clarification on this issue, which really didn't need to be confused, but it was. So you might loop back around with neighborhood councils in some way to make sure that they, they do understand it.
Yes, councilmembers. And please, if your staff's, get any of those confusing questions and phone calls, get them to us right away and we'll get on the phone and get them straightened out.
Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And this question should be directed to Mr. Nelson and he knows, it's no secret that I'm having an enormous amount of difficulty with a number of the neighborhood councils in the southern part of my district. And while I'm fortunate to have some good ones scattered throughout, there seems to be, at the core of it in the southern part of the district, a group of neighborhood councils that have shown a great proclivity to create more tension and conflict than positive results. I am particularly concerned about rolling this money over and basically, rolling over money that we might be able to use to fix a sidewalk or to trim some trees as some of the groups that are in conflict continue to be in conflict. And so, I need to have some clarification as to who's overseeing the accounting practices of the neighborhood councils and then how much detailed explanation is needed from the neighborhood council to request an expenditure of funds? For example, many of the neighborhood councils will use broad-based explanations like educational outreach. Hold my time.
Oh, the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment oversees and audits the neighborhood councils. What we ask them to do as part of the funding program that was approved by the city council is to produce for us a generalized budget. Do you want to spend it on outreach? Do you want to spend it on education, building a website, whatever? So we can make sure that they're not under any misassumptions about what they can use their funding for. their funding for. Then, when they get to the official, specific request, then they can email that to us, or most of them fill out a form and fax it in. And then we're able to look at the specific expenditures that they want, and-
Now, this is, this is after the expenditure in concept has been approved?
Yes.
Hold my time.
Yes.
All right, you know, and as you know, I'm very concerned about a particular group that, and I'm still seeking clarification and documentation, that they may have spent money on, on T-shirts and then paid for a band, one of the members to, to have a, an activity in not even the city of Los Angeles. And I'm just, continue to be concerned about how the funds are used and the criteria. But more than that, the follow-up oversight, or, or if this, in fact, has occurred, the lack thereof, is I don't understand how something like this could happen. And then to be able to stockpile money when, in fact, we could actually put that money in the community sooner is a higher priority, I think. It should be.
Yeah, and that specific example that you gave, we're still waiting it on the alert to see if there's any request for spending money for that purpose.
Well, apparently, some of it's already been spent.
Yeah. We can go back and check again. I have, we've been on the high alert for that.
Yeah, I know. I know. And I want, just want you to know, as far as rolling over the money today, I, I would vote no on that.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to share with the folks in the center table, I'm going to be opportunistic today. I want to thank Janice Hahn for bringing you here. But there are a couple of issues that have been pressing, that I've been very concerned with, and I just want to put them out here, and hoping my colleagues perhaps might have some input into this issue. One is that we know many of the fundamental core concerns that come from neighborhood councils is the impact of the planning process. What projects, what programs will do to their neighborhoods. And yet, because of budget limitations, we haven't been able to supplement the ability to provide for neighborhood councils the kind of planning support that's needed to engage and be informed about the impact of these projects. And I wanted to get from you, if you could hold my time, what is your posture in this issue? How do you see us dealing with it? Because right now, my understanding is to have the same planners going to, not only the, the commission, the regular commission, but they're going to APCs, they're being asked to go to neighborhood councils, neighborhood councils want more information about a project, they want information about MNDs, EIRs, early notices, with the same number of people in the, the department. And yet, I'm trying to understand your posture in this, and how do we see this city closing that gap?
We're dealing with that on several fronts, councilmember. The first thing that we did is provide training for the neighborhood councils at several of our Congress of Neighborhoods, where we not only taught them Planning 101, but actually got into the advanced planning, where we used Khan Howe, the Director of Planning, and zoning expeditors and people like that, to explain to the neighborhood councils exactly really how the process works, once you get beyond the civics lesson process. We also have found great success when different council offices have offered up the help of their planning deputies to sit down with neighborhood councils and show how it works.
But I don't mean to cut you off, but it's the same, for that same reason, they're doing two to three more times work, because they have been doing that. And yet, the staff is burning out. We got staff that don't want to do that work, because all their evenings are spent at these sessions. Plus, they're supposed to do all the work they do in the daytime, yet their ranks aren't increasing. And yet, we're moving on, on that kind of, of an orientation without any additional bodies. How are we going to deal with that?
Well, the other way that we're dealing with it, too, because I had mentioned, we're dealing with it on many fronts, is as part of the reorganization of our office, we created what we call the Empowerment Academy. And we realized that training neighborhood councils just in a twice-a-year Congress of Neighborhoods wasn't good enough. So now, on a perpetual, ongoing basis, we have training that we provide to the neighborhood council leaders in their own neighborhoods. And advanced training in planning and land use is something that we can, that we're going to add to that curriculum. It's a teach-them-how-to-fish thing.
I, I understand, but there's a two-layered issue here. You have the need to provide this technical assistance, orientation, and how you look at planning issues. And I believe you just, there was a study that was just completed that indicates that the majority of the folks participating in the neighborhood councils, based on this report June 7th, a midterm status report generated by the, I guess, graduate student researchers, that 63% of the stakeholders are homeowners. And yet, we're in a city where 72% of the city are renters. You have a reflection here of, of 18% who are renters, who are actually participating in neighborhood councils. So when we look at the state of the city, when you have the have and the have-nots, when you had the city growing at a disproportionate level, I'm not asking you to cure all the city's woes, but the fact is, the neighborhood councils need to reflect the city. I know personally, I have folks who speak Spanish, who speak Sagala, who speak Mandarin, who choose not to go to the councils anymore, neighborhood council meetings, because everything's done in English. They don't understand what's going on, and what's the relevance to them. So there's many hurdles we got to get through. But I'm throwing this at you right now, because I'm reacting to the study that you generated. And we need to understand what's the direction of the neighborhood councils. When I hear Councilmember Hahn say, "The neighborhood councils now have a position in the community, the city has a way of dealing with issues," when in fact, the majority are homeowners and not the renters who make up the city, we need to have a balance. So again, I want to get your reaction to that statement.
Oh, absolutely.
And then I'll ask you to press your button again, Mr. Reyes.
That's absolutely key, councilmember. And in fact, the findings in that report were so important, and the message was so important, that I asked the key author of that to come to our last neighborhood of councils, and during the opening session, speak to the neighborhood councils and preview that report, with the special emphasis being on the importance of making sure that your neighborhood council represents the diversity of the neighborhood. So as we begin to continually evolve our system, that is probably the last of the really, really important things that we have to do, is find ways to make sure that the neighborhood councils meet their charter requirements, they do represent the diversity of the neighborhood. If we can figure out the ways to do that, we will have become a national model, and that's our goal. We talk to other cities all the time. How do you involve renters? How do you involve new immigrants? How do you involve a lot of the other groups of people that are traditionally not properly represented in any government? We're learning from them, and I expect that we'll be the national model for how to do that.
I'll push my button again.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you, Ms. Hahn, for your work in doing this. I was proud to second this motion, and we just held our Neighborhood Council Summit for 13th District this Saturday, and I want to thank all the folks who came out to make that such a successful event. But this was definitely something that was very popular. And we have to remember, colleagues, as this learning process occurs, that the last thing we want to do is encourage irresponsible spending at the end. I think, as General Manager and I were discussing, and I won't assign who said it, but we don't want to have spending like drunken sailors at the end of the year. But we do want to make sure that we have responsible education programs that go on, and that continue to allow neighborhood councils to be creative with their funds and share best practices and experiences. And I think as we look in the future at the idea of neighborhood councils being able to have a pot of money, not that it's theirs, but that they can dictate from Public Works and other places what streets, what areas should have their trees trimmed, et cetera, that, that kind of growing into that process is going to be a critical piece of giving neighborhood councils true responsibility. And I think as we do that, the more responsibility we give neighborhood councils, the more seriously they take their roles. It's when we scale power back that things get more shrill, kind of the pre-neighborhood council dynamic comes about, too, where it's people say what they're against but not for, and that doesn't happen. So I, I appreciate the comments that have been made as well about some of the larger outstanding issues. Appreciate the Planning 101 workshops and what Mr. Reyes was talking about. That was something that we worked with the Planning Department to do in our district, and they've been very popular and very successful, because people don't really understand that. But it's part of developing an entire curriculum, from kind of Budget 101 to Planning 101 to Housing 101 and other things, that will really give people that ability to learn how the city works and to create the relationships directly with city departments. But certainly hanging on to the money and being able to roll that over, as we are able to do, let's be honest, in our own council budgets, I think is the right and responsible thing to do. So you have my full support today.
Councilman, if I could add just briefly to that, one thing that we did within the last couple of months to ensure that the spending of the neighborhood councils is done in a, a way that would make you proud, is we got with the Department of Recreation and Parks, and very quickly, they produced a list of over 100 projects that were small enough in, in amounts that neighborhood councils could fund them in total. And we've been sharing that with the neighborhood councils, and now we're going to expand that to other departments and say, "Look, you should be partnering more with the neighborhood councils to get done projects that will help everybody."
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just had one question. I agree with the issue of allowing it to roll over and not be encumbered, but was there any consideration as to a maximum?
Councilmember, that is an issue that we're going to present to the city council shortly when we do our report on the funding program.
Okay, so that's-
I think you can expect that we will recommend that there be a cap on that.
Okay.
And then it's just a matter of picking the number.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Veragosa.
Yes, Mr. President, members, I had the opportunity to review this matter in committee with the Chair, Chair Hahn, and one of the reasons why we thought it was important to be able to roll over this money was certain commitments had been made to the neighborhood councils, but also because in this kind of formative stages of the neighborhood council, not the experiment, as you have clarified, but, you know, that in this new early phases, we thought it was important that they have this corpus of money. I think at some point, a number of people have raised that, you know, maybe there are limits to this, this kind of a pot in terms of rolling over again and again, but this time around, I thought there was a, a general consensus on the committee that, that we should move in the direction of, of rolling it over in the way that we did.
Ms. Perry.
No, you know, I, I don't have any further questions at this time.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. My wishful thinking would be that we find a way to connect with the school district, we find a way to connect with English second language classes, that we have the adults who already committed to that time to fold into their curriculum the issues of that neighborhood, working with the principals, working with the PTA, working with those bodies that make up the adult populations who don't have the luxury to be at all these meetings, to participate through the English development classes. You have a captured audience in these courses. You have folks who want to learn English. You have a setting that allows for this kind of discussion. Why not build up the neighborhood council agendas within these processes? In that, you would have the opportunity to put in any EIRs or MNDs that are affecting that particular area. You can engage the adults who are living in the community without having to ask them to spend more hours through neighborhood council meetings, because they just don't have the time. Many of them are working two jobs, to take care of their families, and it's unrealistic to have them sit through these sessions without that kind of, how can I say this, support, which means dealing with their childcare, which means having to make up that income because they lost that income giving at that meeting. See, we need to start thinking about, how do we change this chart? That really doesn't speak to the diversity and the level of community members that should be participating in these real decisions. And you have the school district there, you have teachers who want to teach, you have adult populations that don't have the time. We have to start leveraging and looking at our resources from a very strategic point of view. That way, you can bring into an inclusive, an inclusive process. We can deal with folks who don't speak English. So again, I stress to you, you have the wherewithal. I think we just need to start breaking down some of the bureaucratic barriers, if you will, and how we deal with the school district, both the adult level and at the, at the lower levels, in high school, junior colleges. We have the population there, so I'll put together a motion, whatever, we'll talk later, but we need to start finding ways to get the neighborhood councils to reflect the greater part of the city.
Absolutely agree, councilmember, and we're so committed to doing that, and we know that this is one of the things upon which we will be evaluated and rated. We're so committed to that, that we just did a major restructuring of our office. We brought in half of the project coordinators from the field, so that we could divide them up into special teams that can address themselves just to moving ahead faster on things that you just noted. We're committed to that, we'll, we'll stand on it, we'll be evaluated on it.
Other members wishing to be heard? Now we have both items 19 and 20 before us. Mr. Labanche.
I waited at the end, just because I didn't hear everything I wanted to hear, Greg. Good morning. Ms. Hahn, again, I know you've been thanked by many people, but it is true, because it was something that she caught that would have created some chaos here in the last month of the fiscal year, so that's very important. I think Mr. Parks's statement about having some kind of cap, what would be a reasonable cap?
Two years.
Two years, which would be what?
Hundred thousand.
Why is that reasonable?
We just picked the number out of the hat right now. It's something we need to talk more about.
I mean, who, we, you? I don't know, I think council should weigh in on that.
Council will.
What's reasonable? You know? So what's reasonable? What if they want to build something? You can't build much for a hundred thousand, so some communities, I know when we had GCP funds, some councilmembers had $300,000, $400,000. Is that right, Mr. Deaton? Because they did have the commitments that they needed to make, and they saved it, and then they put it on one big project, right? You could give a up or down. No, some did. Didn't, none of them had over the, there was two, let me ask, there was $250,000. Was it, say it again?
One year.
One year rollover. So it's, maybe it's that consistent with that would be a one-year rollover?
That, and then you could take a look at it afterwards, but the, it's relatively unusual to do the rollovers, so I wouldn't want to do it much beyond the one-year rollover.
And let me ask a question. What if they develop, and I'm on the head of the Finance Committee, what if they develop a program and say, "Well, we want to take this money and put it in a trust for the Epic", let's just say Epic, or something in Griffith Park, or something in Wilmington, or something-
That's no difficulty, which you can come to, then the council will create a trust fund, the money goes in, and trust funds don't revert.
Okay, but the trust fund stays there, let's say.
Exactly. You could have ABC Project Trust Fund.
Right.
Council and mayor could create a, a appropriate cost fund. Money could be put into that trust fund and accumulate interest and, and for that specific-
Stands there, but then they get their $50,000 or whatever is approved by council each year, so if you could add the trust fund into it. Again, Ms. Hahn, I just wanted to thank you again for straightening this out at the end of the fiscal year on this issue here. I think I did want to ask, as some people have mentioned this, I do believe on the acts of information is knowledge is power, which is real important, and that's what neighborhood councils are all about. The Department of Water and Power is having a tour coming up. Do you believe in tours?
I have never been on a tour myself. I get uneasy with some tours. I want information, I don't necessarily have to have it in a tour.
But unless you go see it, see, this is a very important point, and I think we've argued it for 30 years, Greg, when we played baseball together here. You got to go out and see it, and neighborhood councils got to go out and see it, whether it's going to a trash plant, whether it's going to a transfer station, where it's going to Owens Valley, whether it's going to a power plant, or seeing the Port of Los Angeles. It's very important, because you can't get the information and the knowledge of the power for what you want. And it goes back to the time when you had a philosophy. You got to push these people out to learn all about their neighborhoods, to learn all about their city, because if you just work it just in between, it doesn't see the whole big picture. So I, I want to see a commitment out of the Department of Neighborhood, Department of Neighborhoods to push neighborhood councils out to learn as much as they can, because information is knowledge is power. How does that light get here, Greg? Somebody works real hard to get it here. How does the water get here? Somebody works real hard to get here. How did they change it yesterday in the port with Ms. Hahn taking two big, big, big extension cords, putting them together and greening a ship? It took, it took a lot of years to do that. But they got to learn that, because when we see all that's going on in this city, we have a better understanding about all what's going on. So you got to push people out, because you'll fool them. And then I want to address the issue on the planning issues. It starts on the block where the people live, because a lot of times, people from up there come down and tell the people down here how to live. And you got to start with the block, in my opinion, to where the people live to understand that, and give that information and knowledge is power to deal with it. But you got to push them out, and that's a high priority of mine as a councilmember, to inform all community activists to learn about the city, the city process. Thank you very much.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. This has been a great discussion, and it's clear, I, I'm really pleased that we're all still really involved in this process of really empowering our neighborhoods, empowering them to have information and knowledge, and then, and then power to really make changes for themselves. This is a note and file, so, but I will say that my, this is exactly what Education Neighborhoods Committee will be taking up in the coming months. We will be looking at this issue of how long do we think neighborhood councils should roll over this money? Should, should we have some kind of a time limit? And I, I'll hope that the department will be ready to maybe talk about some of your suggestions. We're going to talk about outreach. That is clearly at the core of empowering neighborhoods. You know, we're still not getting the kind of diversity we need in neighborhood councils. We have been able to, I think, reach people who have never been involved in the process before. We, we don't have necessarily the usual suspects coming to neighborhood council meetings. There are people that have never been involved before that are, but we need to do a much better job. There are so many people that, as Ed likes to point out, you know, sometimes work two jobs, they have kids, they're tired. Are, are these the kind of people that we're really trying to help get engaged in the process of being empowered for themselves? And I think this is a good time, it's been in place a year, it's a good time to relook at this whole budget system, work with the Controller's Office. Is it working well? Are there things that now you probably believe should be tweaked to make for a better process? So just be, be ready that in the next few months, our committee will be hopefully looking at those, and I would like for you to be ready to give us your suggestions and your input on how we make this process better.
Mr. Zine, followed by Mr. Reyes and Ms. Perry.
Tom, I'm ready to go on a water and power tour. Thank you. No, that's good. I've never been on one. I think if anything you've learned today is to be proactive with neighborhood councils. And I know that they're new to Los Angeles, I know that some people call them an experiment, and Janice Hahn does not call them an experiment, but last neighborhood council meeting, you did call it an experiment at the end of the meeting, you did say it was an experiment. We don't want it to be an experiment, we want it to be something that works. So I would just, and it started with the budget, and it got off on a number of different tangents with neighborhood councils. Be proactive. And I think if we're proactive, then we can let the neighborhood councils throughout the city know that we're serious about supporting them, and some obviously don't think we're supporting them, and all we do is put up barricades and roadblocks. And if we can be proactive to eliminate the problems that emerge, such as what we've seen this morning with this whole issue of the encumbering funds and rolling them over, et cetera, then they'll know we're supporting them instead of creating more bureaucracy and more frustration for them, because they're all volunteers, they don't get paid, they're grassroots from the community, and they've got good intentions, and we don't want to frustrate them, because as we see in the committee meetings, oftentimes, they get frustrated and throw in the towel. We don't want them to do that. So I would just caution you, be more proactive, and I think everyone will come away happy with neighborhood councils. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes.
Yes, thank you, Council President. Is there any way you can quantify the amount of support needed to address planning issues, and how much time planning personnel spends, the neighborhood councils? Can you devise a mechanism that charts out how much planning, where it goes into each neighborhood council? Because there are requests being made. And we will get irate constituents saying, "We had this information, it was wrong, it had to do with this project, no one knew about it, we needed a planner there." Then you try to find the planner, and they're already stretched out doing the APC, or they're doing the commission, or they're doing something else. I really think we need to focus on how much of a demand there is for the planning discipline, planning information, planning document interpretation, planning orientation, because the folks are concerned about the urban development of their area. And we have not, in my mind, addressed that resource base adequately. So we're burning out the staff, we're frustrating the constituents, we're not handing out information in time- we're not handing out information in time, and the return in response is limited. And so you don't get a reflection of the community, you get a reflection of two or three persons that are very, very vocal and demonstrative in what they want to see or what they don't want to see. That is, if we're really going to achieve the goals as was expressed by the charter changes and all the hard work done by Councilman Hahn and everyone else that's been involved in this, we need to sustain, I believe, what is the core of this subject matter, which is the impact on neighborhoods. So could you put together a mechanism, some kind of a measuring tool that talks about how much planning is needed in your neighborhood councils?
We'll take a stab at it. It may not in the end be something that statisticians will really love, but I think it'll be something to be helpful to us here, because we'll know more than we know right now.
And I'll put it in a motion form. I'll come in with that tomorrow. We'll put that out as a directive, and then we'll see, we'll formalize it. But I just want to put that on the table for you. I'm trying to be supportive, but I also know we need to be balanced in how we're dealing with our communities.
Mr. LaBanche for a second time.
Second that, also I want to suggest that, because I haven't heard you say this, that they deal, and you're, you're good to try to go out and let people do their thing, which is important, but also there's a, I use the analogy when I talk to my neighborhood councils, government's like a freight train. It's moving. And it's moving, you got to learn how to hop a freight. And you got to be careful, because you don't want to hurt yourself in that process. But in the planning process, too, there's all these hardworking planning deputies who work at interface, and they could be a key and, and, and an important component of that. I hope you include that in this discussion that Mr. Reyes just spoke of there and not try to, because I think in the charter, and I know Ms. Hahn and Mr. Zine, you were on the charter commission, was there some specific, and Frank, if I'm out of line, let me know, was there some specific suggestion that the area planning commissions would work one way, but that the neighborhood councils would not have a quote "planning function"? Was there any discussion like that? I'm just going off, you remember anything you want to?
Designed to be independent, but did they have any, how was the, how was the planning issue discussed?
If I can, I will tell you, the big fight was whether or not, and at one point, this was a proposal that the elected commission adopted, that neighborhood councils be elected and have land use, decision-making power.
Right.
And that became one of the most contentious issues of the neighborhood council process. And in fact, then we ended up compromising, and we got the area planning commissions in there. But it was never, still never meant for neighborhood councils to not be very much involved in planning and zoning issues, but more in terms of input to their area planning commissions.
But the way it comes down in reality is each council just-
Mr. Zine, let me do a quick timeout here, colleagues, because this is, this is very important, the question that you're raising right now, but-
It's beyond the scope.
The specific, the specific items before us relate to this neighborhood council's existing budgets, whether or not they're rolling over.
I retract everything I said, Mr. City Attorney, I retract the part that I violated.
No, no, it's not a violation, Mr. LaBanche, because it's an important question, but I just want to tell us, we don't have to resolve it in the next five minutes. You have plenty of opportunity to meet with the department outside of this, City Attorney outside of this, get your questions answered. Mr. Reyes is working on a motion for tomorrow. What we have specifically before us will allow neighborhood councils to roll their budget over the next year. So if we're ready to move on that specific area of neighborhood councils, then let's do so. And move on to the seven other items remaining on the desk, Mr. LaBanche.
I got it. I'll revert to a hundred and ten. Hundred and ten seconds I have. Back to the microphone bank. Thank you.
It's seventy seconds. Ms. Perry.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Mr. President. I know that Mr. Nelson will be coming back with a report on capping the rollover and then what that all means, but I would not feel comfortable voting affirmatively on that until I knew that there was a strong education and outreach and sign-off by participants of the council, neighborhood councils, on a code of ethics, a code of responsibility, a code of conduct, a code of conduct that shows an awareness of how important it is to be socially and culturally responsible, and whether or not you have a solution, finally, to halt the practice of neighborhood councils going into other neighborhood councils and taking them over as a way of amassing more access to funds and consolidating a power base for a yet undisclosed agenda.
Yes, when we come back to the city council with the, the report on the funding program and the suggestions, city council is going to have a great deal of latitude if they want to condition this money in any way.
Well, actually, I don't think that's so. I would have to disagree with you on that in that one example I gave you earlier, but on the, the question, I don't believe I have any latitude on stopping one council from going in throughout a council district and taking over numerous neighborhood councils, because I know that, because I know I've been writing you and other people asking, what's the relief, what's the remedy, when I get complaints from the neighborhood councils that have been taken over by another group, and they, they, you know, they go to the commission, but they don't have any recourse. And then their, their group gets taken over, and then basically, you know, we chase away the very people we're trying to attract, because they're sitting ducks for being taken over. So why would I vote to rollover more money so that somebody who has a, you know, megalomania vision of taking over an area, you know, in a system that's designed to chase others away? So I want you to come back with an answer to that, or else I'll have to vote no.
Ms. Hahn.
Yes, I understand.
Thank you. I was just going to clarify, Ms. Perry, you mean if we come up with a policy that talks about how many years they can rollover? You don't mean right now, because it actually, we're not really voting on whether or not we rollover the money. It's already up to the policy.
Today, what, what, basically, my goal today is to tie that together with, you know, what he's, I'm attempting to leverage an opportunity to vote to get my issue out here on the table in public.
Right. I don't, I don't think we have that leverage today, because-
Yeah, no, I'm just saying it for the record, so when he comes back.
Right. But I think when we begin to explore these issues, you're absolutely right. And I tell you what, you, you have struck a nerve, I think, with a lot of people out there on this code of conduct, because I, I think probably the most complaints I'm getting to our committee and personally is the, the way we're driving people out, just because they cannot bear to be in some of these meetings, because it's so uncivil.
Horrendous.
So I think that is exactly something that, as you said, I'm, I'm for empowering, but I'm also for accountability. And if this is something where we need to speak to reform, that's an issue. I think we have a lot of issues that our committee will, will take up this summer.
Okay, so the two reports before us, items nineteen and twenty, recommendation from committees to note and file these reports. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Okay, good discussion. Next item.
Next item, Mr. President, item number twenty-one, call special by Councilmember Garcetti.
Mr. Garcetti.
Okay, for purposes of recusal, Madam Cook, at the record and the roster show, Mr. Garcetti has stepped out. And unless there's a member of the council wishing to speak on this item, let's open the roll on item twenty-one, let's close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. We can welcome Mr. Garcetti back into chambers now, and let's proceed to the next item.
Item number twenty-five, call special by Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mrs. Chair. I got my questions answered from the CIO, so we can proceed on that. Also, I'd like to ask that we go forthwith on fifty-nine.
Okay, on item twenty-five, which is before us, if there's no other members of the council wishing to be heard, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved. Let's end that item forthwith, along with item fifty-nine. Forthwith, please. Next item.
Next item, Mr. President, item number fifty-seven, call special by Councilmember Zine, and there is an amending motion that has been distributed to the council members.
Thank you, Mr. President. The issue that I have with this is if there was a conflict of interest and amendment came around showing there may be a conflict of interest, and the problem with that is it leaves the opportunity for a contract to be given without this council reviewing it. This involves the training of Los Angeles police officers in an area that's very critical, and we hear many times in our executive session. So the question I have for the City Attorney is the motion regarding that contract with that firm that's not willing to agree with that, and to then permit an appropriate firm to take over on this retaliation associated with workplace issues in the Police Department. If a company gets that, a firm gets that contract, the question I have, is that firm been involved in litigation with the city? Has that firm sued the city? And what troubles me with this is that it's going to provide the firm that's given the contract access to confidential records, access to personnel records. And that's troubling if a firm that we're going to be utilizing to assist in training is filing litigation on us that has access to confidential records, personnel records. It just doesn't appear in the best interest of the City of Los Angeles to contract with a firm that files litigation and then represents in teaching and training, and then having access to file more litigation. The other question I have is the City Attorney's Office has hundreds of people assigned, along with the Police Department, and why do we need to go to an outside contract since you folks defend the city, you folks come here before executive session, and why don't we have out of the forty thousand city employees enough resources within the City of Los Angeles family to give this training so we can have a safe environment for our employees, and we don't have to have these hostile work environments, retaliation cases, et cetera? Why do we need to spend thousands of dollars to an outside firm and a firm that may be suing us or has sued us? Multiple questions, and I know that you're ready to respond.
That's okay. Cheryl Mason, Chief of Civil Liability Management. Addressing the first question, the obstacle we ran into with the Lieber-Cassidy firm doesn't have to do with a conflict of interest. This is a firm that represents the city in a number of labor matters, FLSA, and has given us a lot of advice on retaliation matters, a very respected firm, knowledgeable in the area of police operations in particular. The challenge we ran into just yesterday was that they didn't want to sign the city's standard provision for indemnification of the city. It's a reflection, to some extent, of their concern about how litigious the department is over retaliation matters, and our standard language for, for indemnification would require them to defend the city if someone sued claiming that their training or advice affected the city's behavior. We're concerned about the issue. I'm particularly disturbed that they only raised it at the last moment, because they have signed this indemnity language in the past. So we are still going to talk with that law firm to see if there is a way to work through that. If they can't, that's why we asked for the opportunity to look to another firm. We would look for another defense firm. There are defense firms who do management work, who have represented the cities, and are not firms who do plaintiffs' work against the city. So we recognize your concern. The contract language also has very specific confidentiality provisions that would prohibit them from using the information in other contexts or in litigation, not only against the city, but for any purpose other than the city's business. So I don't think conflict of interest is our primary issue. It's can we work out a contract that is typical? We were, we were asking them to simply sign the same contract that all of our outside council firms sign.
A concern I have on the confidentiality, there are leaks that take place. There are leaks that continually take place in government, and something happens in executive session here, and the next day it's in the newspaper. We're talking about an individual who is harmed or could be harmed, and then filed a lawsuit, and when we give access to a firm, now, can you answer this? Have they ever sued the City of Los Angeles, the firm that we're dealing with?
The Lieber-Cassidy firm, I don't know for sure whether they've ever sued the city. I know they are not in the business of suing the city in the sense that they represent us regularly on the defense side. So anytime we retain someone on the defense side, we would have evaluated whether or not they sued or have a conflict of interest. So I only infer that they have not sued the city. They certainly are not aware of them suing us in this labor area or in the police area.
Okay, they may be a premier firm in that area. I'm not that familiar with their litigation. I'm just concerned that we do what's fair for everyone involved, and I would feel somewhat troubled by dealing with a firm that has filed litigation against the city having this type of access, which is access that we know city employees have, and it's a confidential nature with city employees, and they risk their careers and legal application, implication if they do violate that. The other question is, out of all the personnel in the city personnel department, all the personnel in the Police Department, all of the forty thousand plus city employees we have, why do we need to contract with an outside firm and not use what we have in-house for this type of training that deals specifically with the Police Department, specifically with retaliation, hostile work environment, and those areas?
Well, what I'd like to assure you is that the City Attorney's Office and the personnel at the Police Department will be very actively involved in the training. It isn't an either-or. It is an expansion of the expertise and also a sharing of the workload. It was the Police Department itself that has had some prior experience with the Lieber-Cassidy firm and the particular lawyer who we're asking to do the training. He is an experienced trainer. He has done this type of training for other police organizations, and so the idea was to enhance our resources, having him work with the City Attorney and the Police Department, as opposed to working all by himself. There is something of a workload issue. We were trying to put this training on. The Police Department and the Consent Decree Working Group wanted to put this training on as soon as we could. This is a lawyer who has already done this type of training, so he comes ready to go, so to speak, whereas we certainly have lawyers with the substantive expertise and the ability to train, but we would have to do a lot of more groundwork to prepare ourselves. Lastly, I think there is something of a credibility issue that is enhanced. When you bring in an outside lawyer who doesn't have a direct stake in representing the Police Department or defending particular cases, it perhaps gives us additional, an additional voice that some of the supervisory level of the Police Department might hear a little better than they hear from the lawyers who they work with day after day.
And one final question. What level of the department will be subject to this training?
This is going to be, the first round of training will be with lieutenants. The plan was to train about eight hundred lieutenants and above.
And then what about the level of captain, commander? Because when you look at retaliation cases, as we see frequently, and I'm sure you review them, you throw your hands up and say, when are they going to get the message, stop doing that activity? When is it going to get to the higher levels that make those decisions on those complaints and the issues surrounding those?
Well, this will be lieutenants and above, so this will hit the command staff-
Oh, lieutenants and above.
Lieutenants and above. And then there will be training planned in the future, I think, other sessions for bringing it on down to the even line-level supervisors, but this was the first round. It was an effort to get started, bring it to people's attention that this is real and serious, and that the city is going to make a concentrated effort to change things, so.
And in my forty seconds remaining, the overall goal is to reduce our claims and the millions of dollars we're paying out in these types of cases with retaliation, hostile work environment. Is that correct?
Absolutely, and I think also to free up the internal resources to deal with public safety issues, not only reducing dollar payouts, but actually, a lot of time and energy is spent on managing retaliation issues. And so it is my hope that changes in behavior will also make the department more productive for the things that all of you and we also care about.
Okay, Cheryl, you've given great explanations on my questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Skalsky.
Well, I don't, I don't think I'll add to that much, other than just to confirm what Cheryl said. This particular firm has had access to some of our personnel records and information like that in the past, because they had been brought in the past to help us defend other kinds of cases. So they had that degree of familiarity. And I think the amendment is, has just been brought in to say, if this firm isn't willing to sign the particular indemnification, then we will work with one that does, but have that same caveat that we obviously wouldn't go to a group, that we're going to share information with it, would then turn around and sue us, and that would be a conflict. So I think that your points have been well taken. But this particular firm has had that relationship with us in the past. Hopefully, we can work through it again, but if not, we clearly know that as we are setting on this new course to eliminate the kind of retaliation cases that we've seen time and time and time again, not only will we have to invest in our own training, but it's probably useful to have a set of outside ayes work with us, not instead of us, but with us, to give the best of what's out there, the best of what's current in, in the arena of, of workplace harassment, and just be that helping us on a check and balance side, because in this particular department, we know we need it. So I ask for an aye vote on the motion as amended, and let us move forward and encumber it.
Other members wishing to be heard? Mr. Zine.
I would just, I would just agree with that aye vote, but I'd also like to know who finally gets that contract, if it goes to this firm or another firm, that the council will be notified.
We will.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's proceed with the vote now. Please open the roll, please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 64 was called special by Councilmember Garcetti, and there is an amending motion that I believe is in the process of being distributed to the councilmembers.
It had previously been approved. It was reconsidered for the purposes of a technical amendment by the department. If that's been distributed, we'll accept that without objection. Members wishing to be heard on item 64? Saying none. Let's open the roll on 64 as amended, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved, and let's send that, please, forthwith. Next item?
Item number 65 called special by Councilmember Zine, and an amending motion has been distributed.
I would ask that that amending motion and the matter go to committee.
The entire matter or just the amending motion?
Rules and elections. The entire matter, as I understand my conversation with Mr. Deaton, the entire matter would go to...
Why don't we continue it one week?
Don't do that?
And we'll try to resolve it.
There was an issue regarding the retired and how that would be presented. That's the issue. You want to continue it a week, we can probably get it resolved by then.
Okay, but your amending motion has been introduced. Let's continue both for a week and resolve this thing.
Okay, thank you.
Without objection, members. Next item, please.
Next item is item number 66, and a substitute motion has been distributed.
Okay, item 66 called special by Ms. Garcetti. Substitute motion has been distributed. There's no need for discussion. Let's open the roll on the substitute, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith, please. Next item?
Next item, Mr. President. Item number 67 was called special by Councilmember Labange.
Ms. Labange, followed by Ms. Cardenas.
Well, thank you. Ms. Cardenas, I want to yield to the committee chair, because I think I was out of the room when I called it special. Would you like to start off, and then I'd like to speak after you?
Thank you. And then are you going to yield to the committee vice chair, and then, and then, and Greg? Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. I just wanted to certainly state for the record that we do appreciate the time and dedication that the business people of Los Angeles has given to the Business Tax Advisory Committee, otherwise known as BTAC. Their insight is unique and their perspective is very, very valuable to us. I think it'd be premature for us to dissolve the Community-Based Business Advisory Tax Committee. They've been a critical part of exposing our business tax system in Los Angeles, which is currently inefficient, out of line with our neighboring cities, and needs major, major improvements. Rather than being outraged and just plain mad, the business community of Los Angeles, specifically the Business Tax Advisory Committee, has been constructive and impressively disciplined in helping us, the City of Los Angeles, recognize our shortcomings, and the fact of the matter is that we need to change our system. For example, they've come forth and brought to our attention that we need to simplify the system with simpler forms, and that, for example, we can actually move toward a system that has single category filing. And in addition to that, they brought to our attention that the business community out there really wants to be in better compliance and have greater participation, which will greatly enhance our ability to reduce the rate across all business boundaries. We have, in fact, had some movement in recent history, but we have a long, long way to go. And I want to specifically thank the members of the BTAC over the last five years and plead with them that they please understand that it's not that we want them to dedicate more and more hours of their free time to the City of Los Angeles, and that's not the reason why we are asking that we extend this sunset that would otherwise convene this committee and no longer have it meet anymore, but that we're doing it because we value them, we appreciate them, and their unique responsibility of being business people, paying those taxes today really does allow us to better evaluate the system and make movement and changes. In football, they called a 20-yard line to the end zone being in the red zone. We are finally in the red zone after five years of formally having the business community advise us on how we need to move forward. It's leadership over the last five years of the previous mayor and the current mayor and many council members who have come to pass through this council, and current council members like Wendy Grule, who has actually been on this committee longer than I have and who has been making movements and making sure that we have the kind of positive movement that we need to see happen here in the City of Los Angeles. Very briefly, I would like to say this Business Tax Advisory Council has done wonderful things for the City of Los Angeles. We should not allow them to sunset and go away when we're at the ninth hour in the last phase of what we need to see happen. And very, very succinctly, I'd like to say, the majority of the things that need to happen with our business tax in the City of Los Angeles very likely will happen in the next six months and need to happen soon. The Business Tax Advisory Council needs to remain formal. It needs to remain there to make sure that they hold our feet to the fire and make sure that we follow through with the commitments that politicians have been making to the business community of Los Angeles for many, many years. We value them. We need them. This sunset needs to be put off at least till December of, at the end of this year. Thank you.
Ms. Labange.
I just wanted to support the work of the chair, the words of the chair, and all of us, because we have to keep the pressure on. And now, Mr. Deaton, Mr. Deaton, I just wanted to say we have to keep the pressure on for business tax reform, and this extension is very important to include the business community. I appreciate you taking the time to hear this message because I think it's, we'll never get over the hump unless we keep marching towards it, and I think this allows us to march towards that. And in the creative ways with the brilliant mind that you have, you can help us, along with Mr. Fujioka, find a way to reduce the taxes on the burden of business to be able to serve the people of Los Angeles in a better way and spur economic development. I thank you, Mr. Deaton. I thank you, Madam President. Now to the next speaker.
Ms. Grule.
Thank you, Ms. Skakowsky, and thank you, Mr. Cardenas, for your leadership as chair of this committee and the importance, and Mr. Labange, as well as Mr. Smith and Mr. Garcetti and many around this room. You may recall, a couple of years ago, when we started talking about business tax reform, a lot of people's eyes glazed over, and it was BTAC who, over the years, has reminded us. They've been our conscience. They have been those wonderful nudges to us, the reminder about how archaic our business tax system is in the City of Los Angeles. And that system is forcing businesses to go to other surrounding cities, and instead of creating the jobs here in Los Angeles, they're creating them in those surrounding cities. I wholeheartedly support the extension of the BTAC Committee. They have been, again, our, I think, our guiding light, our reality check, our group that reminds us that we must get this done. We feel that they have put that appropriate pressure on us to have a major tax reform in the City of Los Angeles. When you read the papers, when you talk to our colleagues and you talk to our businesses, everyone has on the tip of their tongue "business tax reform," and that's a major accomplishment. And we want the BTAC to be around to remind us of that, to, again, give us the perspective of those small and medium-sized businesses. Last week, VICA and the Chamber of Commerce and many of the other organizations have thrown down the gauntlet and give us a challenge to complete our business tax reform by October 31st. I think that's a good idea for us to have a deadline. We all know that without deadlines, these things can go on for months and years and decades. So I think, and I know, Mr. Cardenas, we have a meeting this week, and are going to begin to discuss many of those proposals that have been put forward and the one that Mr. Marc Garcetti and I put forward, but I think business tax reform is something for all of us that we can all share. As my staff member said the other day, the success has many mothers, and I think that we have mothers and fathers here in the city council chambers that are going to help us push forward business tax reform. The time is now. We have to move. We have to continue to keep the pressure on, and BTAC is going to do that. The Los Angeles Times wrote in one of their editorials that this should be the number-one issue that we focus on in this year. That is a major accomplishment. We've read in the Daily News about their constant reminder of the need for business tax reform. So I think we can and will meet that deadline that they have set for us with putting our heads down and reminding all of us that businesses create jobs, jobs create an opportunity for people to buy their homes or rent their homes and be a part of this community. So I stand in full support of Mr. Cardenas's motion and know that all of my colleagues as well support that in the continuation of BTAC.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Councilmember Cardenas, Chair Cardenas, for your motion here and for your activism on making sure Los Angeles becomes as friendly a place to do business as anywhere, not only in Southern California but throughout the state. We have that deadline. It's Halloween, and I think that we can think of all kinds of things we can dress up in if we don't pass business tax reform in this city, but I think there's a responsible way to do this, in a way that we can do it that's fiscally sound, at the same time that really does yield results. We've seen how this can work in Hollywood when we were trying to recruit Nielsen to come to Hollywood. They were considering Burbank, they were considering Chicago, they were considering Beverly Hills. It was our ability to waive 90% of our business tax, which is a law in the CRA areas for entertainment companies, that they said was the deciding factor for them when they did the numbers. And what the impact of Nielsen, which is bringing 700 jobs that pay $70,000-plus on average to Hollywood, is going to have on our overall revenue picture from Hollywood more than pays for that. And so if we can do this strategically, if we can do it significantly, and give BTAC the life to be able to continue that drumbeat that is so necessary for our economic health here, I think we will all be proud of where we get later in this year. So thank you, Mr. Cardenas and Mr. Labange, for your activism, and Ms. Grule and Mr. Smith as well. Thank you.
Ms. Zine.
Ms. Garcetti, you said we have till October 31st? So what I suggest that we do in this, and I enjoy hearing Councilmember Cardenas' radio commercials telling the businesses to pay their taxes so everyone will be on the same plane, asking, asking, encouraging, motivating, but since it'll be trick-or-treat, what we should do is, we should treat the businesses properly and support this, and we should trick the critics by showing we can make it happen. So trick-or-treat could be a benefit to the businesses by treating them properly, and the trick will be on the skeptics that say we can't make it happen. We can make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you. No one else wishes to speak? Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That matter is approved.
Next item, Madam President. Council has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Hahn requests to be excused Wednesday, June 23rd, to leave at noon, and Wednesday, June 30th, to leave at 11:00 a.m. Motion is required on the June 30th request.
Mr. Smith moves. Mr. Y second. The motion is approved.
Councilmember Veer Rigosa requests to be excused Friday, June 25th, to arrive at 11:45 for city business. A motion is required.
Mr. Garcetti moves. Mr. Cardenas seconds. Mr. Veer Rigosa's excuse is approved.
Councilmember Garcetti requests to be excused Tuesday, June 29th, for city business, and Friday, July 23rd, for personal business. A motion is required on the June 29th request.
Ms. Hahn moves. Mr. Labange seconds. Mr. Garcetti's excuse is approved.
And Councilmember Zine requests to be excused August 11th, 13th, 17th, and 18th for city business, excuse me, for personal business. That meets council policy.
Mr. Zine is excused on those dates.
And that clears the desk.
Ms. Perry?
Announcement, please. This is for a clean community celebration Saturday, June the 26th, our Environmental Cleanup Fair. We'll stage it in South Park. It's going to begin at 8:00 to 11:00 a.m. for the cleanup, and then the fair itself will be from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and that is at South Park at 345 East 51st Street.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn, for an announcement.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to highlight the fact that each of you should have a light bulb on your desk filled with yellow jelly beans saying "AMP." So we all got amped yesterday, and Tom Labange alluded to it, but it really was an historic day yesterday in the Port of Los Angeles, and I know Tony Cardenas was there along with myself. And this is something we should be so proud of, that we are the first port in the world, in the world, to have a cargo container vessel come into our port, and instead of berthing and burning diesel fuel for three days, they've actually plugged in to our DWP power grid. And just by that one ship plugging in for the time that they're in berth, it's equivalent to 16,000 truck trips burning diesel emission into our air. This will so significantly reduce air pollution in our harbor area as well as the Los Angeles basin, and this is really just the first ship. China Shipping will be required to have 70% of their ships plug in, and the Port of Los Angeles will be moving to retrofit other berths in the harbor area so that more shipping companies can take advantage of this new technology. A great partnership between the Harbor Department and DWP, and something really we should all be so proud of, that we put to bed forever the argument that we have to make a choice between economic development and clean air. This proves we can have both. So it was a great day for LA.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn. Congratulations. Mr. Labange.
No, I just want to congratulate Janice, because I think it was a long fight, and I think you said it properly. We do want good economic development from the Port of Los Angeles, but to grow it in the right way, in the green way, and working with water and power and creating this. And it's amazing, we don't realize, but the only spot in the world where this is happening is happening in the Port of Los Angeles, so I thank you for your leadership. I also, since you wanted to...
Let me just, I forgot to mention, the other great partner, of course, was China Shipping. And they came to the table with intense negotiations, but China Shipping deserves a great deal of credit for being the first major shipping company to also enter into this partnership with the Port of Los Angeles. They are also to be commended.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Garcetti?
And I was still talking, but, is that all right? She stole my time, but Eric, are you talking about this?
Nope.
Oh, good. I just wanted to say also, we opened our pools on Saturday, which was a great day. Wendy kicked it off on Friday. I kicked it off on Saturday, and it's an important aspect of our pools and the wonderful support that we have, and I wanted to thank everyone who's involved with that particular issue. I did get in the water at North Hollywood Park, and we got to do something about all our pools, and we will do something about all our pools, but I wanted to mention the kickoff of the pools. And I'll swing it back to my colleague, Mr. Garcetti, right now.
Thank you. Swing and Tom Labange. Colleagues, on a more serious note, yesterday was the 40th anniversary of the disappearance of Chaney, Schwerner, and Goodman, the civil rights workers who were working in the heat of the civil rights struggle in deep south, who were murdered in their work. Two folks who had come from outside the south and one from the south, and those murders still pretty much unsolved till today. We've certainly come a long way, but giving memory to those three individuals who gave their lives for equality, not only here in Los Angeles but throughout this country. I just wanted to mark that.
Thank you. Are there other announcements? Ms. Reyes?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to take this moment to thank Mayor Hahn, joining me this morning about a groundbreaking of a transit-oriented village, transit-oriented district, at the Amity 26 Station, the Lincoln Heights Cypress Park Station, total of 387 units. A percentage of them will be senior rental, another percentage will be family rental, and will also have condominium market-rate housing, all on one side. So we'll be mixed income, mixed use, retail commercial adjacent to the Lincoln Heights Cypress Park rail station. Thanks to AmCal, the developer, the nonprofit, would be works, and the strong support of building and safety and planning, along with the mayor's office, Jim Hahn, and working together and bringing to fruition a showcase of how we can build urban villages around a rail station. So I just wanted to take this moment to thank everybody, and hopefully we'll have, this was a groundbreaking, we'll have the ribbon cutting in 18 months. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Other announcements? Are there any adjourning tributes? We do have adjourning tributes, so would everyone in the room please rise for adjourning And let me recognize Councilmember Parks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have four adjourning motions. As said, we adjourn in memory of John T. Graves, who was born in Alabama on January 30th, 1924. He was a visionary in real estate, economic development in the City of Los Angeles. His love for real estate started early when he assisted his parents in remodeling rental homes in Alabama. He's attended Tuskegee just as World War II broke out, also transferred to Howard University and entered the Army Special Training Program. He completed these studies, graduated before entering the Army. He completed these studies, graduated before entering the Army. He has, for more than 50 years, his firm undertook the development of more than 13 strip malls, small office buildings, made it possible for countless families to fulfill the dream of homeownership. His crowning achievement was a 27,000-square-foot building on Crenshaw Boulevard, constructed for $5 million that today is a leasing to the Employment Development Department of the State of California. Also, he leaves his wife, Pat, and five children. Also, as that we adjourn in memory of Donald Cornwell, who was a board of directors, member of YMCA since 1990. He has been a Go Book honoree, served on many committees. In the early '50s and '60s, he served many terms as chair of the YMCA board. He has been a co-chair of the YMCA Investment Committee, deeply involved in YMCA efforts to acquire leased space for a variety of facilities. He secured a $1.1 million bequest for a camp operation recently. His funeral arrangements are pending. He died suddenly of a stroke last weekend. He leaves his wife Suzanne. Also, former LAPD officer Talbert Tal Terrell, Detective Two, retired from LAPD, July 17th, 1998. His last assignment was South Bureau homicide. He died recently in Cold Springs, Texas, on Thursday, June 17th. His viewing will be at Inglewood Cemetery on Thursday, June 24th, from 3:00 to 8:00. Funeral services will be at the Galleria Chapel, Inglewood Park Cemetery, on June 25th at 1:00 p.m. And then finally, Edward "The Nail" Parker was born in Los Angeles to Carolyn Johnson and Edward Parker on May 17th, 1969. He was an all-around athlete from the ages 6 to 18, graduated from Van Nuys High School, began his education in electrical engineering before being diagnosed with multiple sclerosis in 1988. Even during the 17-year battle with this disease, he maintained a positive attitude and kept the atmosphere light. He had a variety of outside interests. He passed away at the age of 35 on Saturday, June 12th. He leaves his mother, Carolyn, and his father, Edward, and a host of other relatives.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Other motions? Mr. Weiss?
Just wanted to know that we'll begin the ITGS meeting at about 1:15. A little late.
Thank you for that announcement. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to also adjourn in memory today of the father of an individual who works in the 13th Council District, Albert Vargas, who helps direct the Legion Valley United Community Center. His father, Nestor, died of a heart attack Thursday evening. It was a shock to everybody. He had fallen from a ladder a few months ago and had been recovering very nicely and had always been a very healthy and spry individual, unfortunately and surprisingly. On Thursday, he passed away. Memorial Mass will be held at St. Anne's tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m., but may he rest in peace, and our thoughts are with Albert and the entire family.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Council is adjourned.